All right, let's call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So do we have request to withdraw specific items from consent agenda? All right, now for the approval of consent, recommended that upon the recommendation of the superintendent consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
So now we are at public comment. This is your approximate position and time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of Congress, etc. There's a two-minute time limit. Any, were there any, Barb?
No, Ellen, there weren't.
Okay.
And I'm guessing there's no one in the, the audience?
Correct.
All right.
Then we go on to furloughs. That upon the recommendation, let me see if I can get, okay, thank you, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following employees be placed on furlough effective December 4th, 2020. Cafeteria monitors Patty Dallas, Sharon McAllister from EE, Diane Strong, Karen Gross from GLP, Penny Chapman, Deb Smith from middle school and high school. School managers Josh Van Fleisch and Cheryl Dunmire. Bus attendants Joanne Zalinski, Frances Phillips, Emily Bauer, Beverly Susanna. Bus attendants brought back on a limited basis, Deborah Barton, 12-4, Mary Tara Shavitz, 12-4, Diane Zimmer, 12-4. Bus drivers E. Peter Belgium, Michael Best, Julian Blanco, Leon Granger, Deborah Gregor, Robert Guglielme, I'm sorry about that, Heidi Mahoney, Judith Pelashy, Cynthia Rankus, Noel Sisti, Joseph Villafranca, Paul Winter. Bus drivers brought back on a limited basis, Robert Barton, 12-14, Janet Bonser, 12-4, Linda Christ, 12-7, Bonnie Gabel, 12-7, Danielle Gabel, 12-7, Kathleen Jenko, 12-4, Corinne Kennethic, 12-14, Don Priceal, 12-14, Alan Polinsky, 12-7, Bradley Susanna, 12-14, Vincent Baco, 12-4.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Resignations that upon the recommendation of their superintendent, the resignation of microcomputer repair technician Noah Meister be accepted effective November 30th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
New business appointments, let's go to Edwards. Thank you, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jordan Edwards be appointed on probation as a school nurse effective November 19th, 2020, and ending May 18th, 2021. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level 13, step three through four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Darren Azarella, laborer, be appointed as a temporary custodian to replace Michael Schmidt from December 17th, 2020 until October 21st, 2021. Salary is per CSEA contract level eight, step 13.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of high school textbooks be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of technology items be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation routes be adjusted effective December 4th, 2020 as per the attached.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, effective December 31st, 2020, substitute rates for monitors, cleaners, teacher aides, bus attendants, laborers, clerk typists, and technology subs will increase from $12 to $12.50 per hour to remain in compliance with New York State minimum wage laws.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accept the results of the Capitol Project 2022 referendum. Proposition 1, 2022 Capitol Improvement Project, 253 yes, 187 no, referendum passed. Proposition 2, contingent, 2022 Capitol Improvement Project, additional health, safety, technology, and recreational upgrades, 245 yes, 192 no.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Now for our business report.
Good evening. First of all, we received our state aid output reports, and the output reports that we see, we see are what are actually going to be spent and scheduled for the district to receive after all of the reporting is sent to New York State and they can determine what some of our expense-driven aids were. And unfortunately, for the first time, they were down $181,656 from the adopted amount in the New York State budget. So that means we were receiving less state aid than we planned. At this time, with these numbers, I can now project that a 20% loss of state aid would be $2,477,184. The Consumer Price Index for November was released late this afternoon, and it's at 1.22%, so the tax cap factor for the complex formula will be less than 2% this year. So that will keep the taxes lower because the Consumer Price Index is lower. That's before any of the exclusions. We also received the first installment of our Universal Pre-K Grant today, and the state reduced that already by 20%. It is the only aid so far to my knowledge that has been reduced. Reviewing of our sales tax revenue received as of November 30th. Our sales tax revenue is down by 7% or $30,000 from 2019. Now I have some good news for you. 98% of the property taxes were collected, and that's consistent with prior years, typically 98% is what is done in the local collections. The other 2% is sent to Erie County for re-levy on the county taxes. We sent back this year in our re-levy approximately $237,000. Those taxes the district will receive because the county has the authority to withhold, to take possession of properties, so they have to make the school districts whole. So whatever our levy was, we are never shorted by the collection process. So those funds usually come in around April of this 2021. Any questions?
So Laura, what was the, the CPI this year and what was it last year, if you don't off the top of your head?
I don't have those numbers with me tonight, but I will get them for you.
Okay, so what was the CPI for?
November, it's at 1.22%.
Okay. All right, any other discussions in regards to the business report? So Laura, basically what you're saying is initial indications, and I know the governor was on today talking about how we get from now until President-elect Biden takes control and possible federal aid coming to the state. So as of now, we've been, for the 2021 school year, 20% has been reduced out of any state aid that's been given to us, is that correct?
No, we've only received it reduced out of our UPK grant. We received some funding that goes to the teacher retirement system already, and I don't believe that was reduced. We're waiting because typically, this time of year, school districts are not receiving state aid, the bulk of our state aid comes in March, and then there's another payment in June. The rest of the year, we just get small amounts, and they pay our TRS, Teacher Retirement System, payment directly to them out of state aid. So our cash flow isn't impacted until we get to typically February or March due to any withholding. So that's, at this time, we're not seeing a cash flow crunch, it's just that we're planning for to be ready in case they announce reductions in our state aid. They've already told us to be prepared for up to 20%.
Okay.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ellen. I want to start by taking a moment to recognize Michelle Byrne, who is an eighth-grade science and physical science teacher at our middle school and high school respectively. She also serves as the Science Department Chair. This week, Michelle was notified that she has completed the rigorous process to be recognized as a National Board Certified Teacher. This is quite the accomplishment that requires a number of years of service, significant study in the candidate certification area, and attainment of high-level scores on the qualifying examinations.
Wow.
That's pretty fantastic. We salute Michelle for her willingness to pursue this lofty ideal, which will certainly, surely benefit our Eden students for years to come. So congratulations to Michelle. We're very proud of her and thankful for her service.
Great job.
That is wonderful news. That is something to be proud of.
Absolutely. So moving on, and at, at risk of personal peril and injury, I want to personally take this opportunity to recognize Gary and Barb Tomasulo. Gary and Barb have spent countless hours working together in their home woodshop to handcraft toys for local needy families.
Oh.
The Tomasulos have donated around 50 handcrafted wooden toys to the Toys for Tots campaign. I have one example of about four or five different toys that they, they put together. The craftsmanship is outstanding. The hours that they must have put into this is truly a labor of love, and I really felt it was worthy of recognition this evening, even though tomorrow is going to be a rare, very rough day for me because Barb is giving me the evil eye right now. Their efforts and generosity are sure to make a child's day just a bit brighter on Christmas Day, and we thank both Gary and Barb for their generosity spirit. So thanks so much.
Yay.
Okay, moving on to an update on our COVID testing plan. As of now, we plan to return to the hybrid model of instruction on January 4th. I do want you all to know that our implementation teams have been discussing how they can improve on the hybrid model. We've had a lot of positive feedback on the consistency of our current remote model, and we need to try and mirror some of those things. So that will continue to be a work in progress. Very difficult to make it as good as in-person instruction, but as we've said from the beginning, our goal is to have some, some, some level of improvement each week and each month along the way. So return on the 4th is dependent on our local and regional infection rate staying steady and hopefully continuing to improve. Our community should expect correspondence from me next week outlining the specifics of our testing plan. I expect further communication will be shared during the winter recess, solidifying our return to school date. So at, at the very least, our, our community should expect a correspondence next week outlining our plan, and I'll go into that in a little bit in a second here, and then another correspondence sometime during winter recess, just solidifying when we expect to have students back in school. Thus far, we've received consent to a test about 400 students and 200 staff members. These numbers are sufficient to begin our testing program. I do anticipate that we may have more people willing to be tested or to allow their child to be tested once details of the plan are shared, and probably again, once again, we have, once we have demonstrated that we have a safe and effective program in place. The more students and staff we have who are willing to participate, the less often we will have to ask anyone to test a second time. Most likely, we will be testing in all of our school buildings on alternating Mondays and Fridays, so that both cohorts are involved in this process. So for instance, if we test on a Monday, that's the A, E, and F cohort, and on a Friday would be the D, E, and F cohort. Staff testing at this point will most likely fall on Wednesdays. That, in the remote model, is that will offer the least amount of disruption to the educational day. Our administrative team is working on details on how we can support parents who wish to be present when their child is tested. At this point, we're considering a drive-by test site, as we will continue to limit visitors to the interior of our buildings.
That's a good idea.
So any questions on COVID testing or return to school before I move on?
Yes. Am I, am I allowed to have a question now, or wait for?
No, go ahead.
All right, just, I, I did read and surprised, and maybe that's not supported. What, what other, the, the guidance from the, the State Department of Ed on on, on in-person learning, when, when the parents refuse testing? Because the, the mayor of New York said like, no ticket, no shirt, if you don't consent, I don't know if, if he can get away with that. If you don't consent, then, then you stay remote. Is there any regulation saying they come to school even they refuse? Because it, it does seem unfair that we only have 400 out of over 1,000 students that are, you know, where we got consents.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't want to, I don't know if I want to say fair or unfair, but I will say worrisome.
Yes, worrisome is better.
Right?
Yes, yes.
And I agree that return to school on the backs of 400, when it really should be closer to 1,200, is, is worrisome. I can tell you that early on, we solicited feedback from the State Department, the State Education Department and the Governor's Office about whether testing would be required, and they indicated that they would not issue an edict that required testing for in-person attendance. In fact, they said the opposite, that test refusal should not prevent a child from, from experiencing in-person instruction. And I, and you know, I, I respect that it is an individual decision with our parents and with our staff members. I certainly do plan to resolicit participation. We did get probably another 10 or 12 folks who, who joined in and to be part of the testing pool after I put a call out the other day. I really am, I'm grateful that we have enough students and staff to reopen in January, but the way the numbers break down now, and testing is by building, by the way, so it has to be 20% by building. Just taking a look at my notes on the side here. The middle school, high school, we have 29% of, of the student body has consented to test, or their parents have consented to test. At Eden Elementary, it's 36%, and that GLP, it's 31%. So when you look at the middle school, high school, we're drawing from 721 students. We have 209 that are willing to test. And that will get us through, you know, a month and a half or so, maybe a little bit longer than that. But that is something we will continue to address. I do really think, and I said it before, that once all the details of the program are shared, and once people see it in action, they may be more willing to, to participate, and, and that's my hope.
Is the form itself difficult to fill out online? Is, is that something that, that's a problem?
Um, you know, we didn't, we had, we had some folks who had, had some issues, but it was really a handful. Lucinda was really outstanding in, in reaching out to these folks and getting them some help. Some folks that needed some help had really already completed the form, and they just didn't know that they did. So I, I don't, you know, based on the number of, the total number that completed it successfully, I don't think that it was the difficulty of the form that, that caused our numbers to be where they are.
But there, there are some people also that don't have computers. Is that a percentage that, that's a problem?
That's a really, really low percentage in our district.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I, I also believe, we were talking about this at the school I work at, I also believe that, I think there's a little bit of the guinea pig mentality, I don't think people want to be the first. I don't know if that makes sense, what I'm saying? And I think once other people who are consenting assure the people that are hesitant that it was okay, you know, you might get some numbers up or rise up from that.
Well, I, I fully plan to be first in our district. So, you know, I, as superintendent, I guess I could pull, pull that authority and say, give, give me the, give me the test first. But I definitely, I definitely plan to do that, we've got to lead the way. And you know, it's, it's, we've said it many times, we made so many plans, and we really didn't think we would be in, be in the situation where we would have to test. Ultimately, if our community continues to do the right things away from school, and we drive the infection rate down, we won't have to subject our students to, to this process, but right now, we do.
Jeff, so I'm, just get me squared away. So if we go back to yellow, do we still have to test in yellow?
We do, they have not adjusted the, the, the rules for yellow at all. We would need to, we would need to test 20%. I think it's a month, and 20%, and yellow is the zone where, after you test, if your infection rate is lower than the regional infection rate, which was like 6.4 or 6.04, something like that today, then you no longer have to test. That's, I, I'm not even going to get into why, why I find that, find that silly, and if you review that, last meeting's minutes, we use the example that that could be 16 students and so on and so forth, and Don, you replied back about the number of folks who'd be in quarantine if we had 16 positives on campus and last year, and last, last month's meeting, so.
Are, are we now not in yellow, or are we still in yellow, or no?
No, no, we're in orange. We, we skipped right over yellow to orange, Ellen, we are overachievers. So we left past that right into orange.
Okay, we're in orange. I thought maybe we moved up now. Oh, my goodness.
The numbers have gone down the last week in, in regards to the Eden town, so hopefully they continue to trend down, and we don't have a, a holiday, another holiday spike, so.
I hope so. Ready for me to move on, or do we have any other COVID-related questions?
So, so we're good to go? We actually have tests now, or are we still waiting for them?
We did receive our tests Monday of this week, is that right? We got them on Monday? Today's Wednesday, yesterday was Tuesday, so it had to be Monday. Yeah, and I, you know, we expected them last week, and as you know, we had some discussion on whether we should, we really, really accelerate things and bring kids back this week. And it's good that we exercise caution, because we did not have the materials that were promised to us until this week. And again, the, the folks that are assisting us have been great, they're incredibly busy and working with all kinds of districts as well. But, you know, in terms of PPE and, and testing and test preparation and training, we're right on track for all of those things.
Now, do we have a, so do we have enough tests to actually do, like, all of January?
Yes.
Okay.
We have 680 tests onsite. We need to test, what would we say, 320 or so? Something like that.
Don't consent?
I'm sorry?
Parents can still give consent?
Um, listen, we've got that closed currently, right? Yeah. We, my, my plan was to continue working this week to set up our program, and then put out another communication and reopen consent. But if you're talking to folks and they're interested, they can reach out to me in district office, they can send an email, we'll get them set up. But at some point, we had, we had to shut, we had to close the door on that so that we could figure out what numbers we had to work with. So number one, we can determine whether we had enough people in our consent pool to, to bring people back to school, and then also to start to organize and schedule the testing. One of the things we would like to do is, is to schedule as far out, as far out as we can. So say we had 600 total people, we could look at how many we needed each week, and if we're going to test every, you know, Monday and Friday, every other week, we could actually plan out through, you know, January, February, even into March, and, and provide people some information on, on, on when their selected date is. So we, we needed to, to have a, a number to start with, and then we'll, you know, obviously reopen that in, in the near future when we, when we can. Does that make sense, Marley?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And Jeff, did you say if we get, if we're lower than the Erie County positive level, we could stop, can we, we could stop testing? Did I hear that right?
You heard that right, but that's only in a yellow zone. That does not apply to us right now.
Oh, so we have to go down to yellow, okay.
Other questions? Okay, I'm going to move on then. Finally, I want to share my deep gratitude to the Eden community for the support of the Capitol Improvement Project. As been said many times, this is work that really needs to be done, and the positive response from the voters will allow our district to move forward. I would be remiss if I did not specifically thank Sandy Anzalone and David Martin for their hard work, dedication, and leadership they provided on this project prior to their retirements. So thank you to those two folks, thank you to the, the Board of Education and all the stakeholders that were involved. Really excited and relieved as well that we had such a positive result to that vote. Looking forward to the work ahead with our, our partners, and, you know, how we can really make some, some definite positive impacts on the district. And then really, this is really finally, warm wishes to our board members and our community for a wonderful holiday season. I look forward to our work together in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Same to you.
Jeff, same here.
Do we have any students to do our report? No? Okay. Board Report Roundtable?
All right, I got a couple of things, kind of piggybacking on what Jeff said, I just really want to thank the community for coming out and voting on the Capitol Project yesterday. You know, we had a number of absentee ballots along with in-person. It seemed to go very smooth, and I just want to thank everybody for that, for that vote, we got some work to do as we move forward. Both Young and Right and Campus did show up during the final minutes to see what the results were, and they're ready to, to roll up their sleeves and start the, the next process, which is going to be working stuff through SED and really getting into the, the details of, of the projects. Another thing, I'm going to put Mr. Awanko on the, on point here real quick. Sorry, they didn't. Sorry, Jay didn't give you a heads up on this, but I saw Section Six has delayed winter sports until at least January eighteenth. I'm guessing there's going to have to be a number of practices prior to any start of, of, of games, if, if that happens. And right now, we're really looking at a six-week season. Because Fall, Fall Two starts March first.
Yeah, yeah, football in, if we have football, and volleyball would start March first. That's the Fall Two. So they're looking at, you would have need six days of practice, at least right now, for low risk, which is going to be our bowling and swimming team that would start the eighteenth. And then we would have, there's no date for high-risk sports yet. tentative for the, the governor for basketball, for basketball wrestling, cheerleading. I think I'm forgetting, am I forgetting anything? That's.
Hockey.
Hockey, yes, ice hockey, yeah.
All right, so I, I guess that's the way I was reading it, so it, if it is a season, it is a very abbreviated season, so.
Very small season. I can't imagine them extending it, so.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Jay.
No, no problem.
And then, same thing, happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Dan. Yep.
Any else from the, the board?
All right then. So the next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. And no executive session, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so adjourn the meeting. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned at whatever time it is?
Seven thirty-two.
Seven thirty-two PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Might be, might be the shortest meeting ever.
I think, good job all around.
Holiday, happy holiday.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas to you.
Christmas, merry Christmas.
Happy.
We're going to show them some snow tomorrow, or today.
You're going to hardly wait.
All right, have a great night. Happy holidays.
Holidays, everyone.
You too, Jeff. Good night.
Night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.